It is six o'clock Eastern Time on the 18th.
Tim, we can't hear you? I'm cutting out.
Ask him to call in, maybe the line's better. This connection doesn't look good.
Maybe, can you hear me at all?
Barely.
Can you hear me at all?
All right, yes, but not clearly.
Okay, well, just, just, if I have, I still lean on there, maybe he could ask about the comments.
Yes, I can. You want me to just go over the agenda, Tim, and make sure everybody knows what's happening?
Yes, let's, we'll, we'll take it forward. The first quarter would be public comments, let's turn that first.
Okay. Is there any public comments to be made from anyone here present? I see one here and on, online, so I'm not sure whether someone has one there. But if you're online and want to make a public comment, you can either go to the box, or just show yourself or raise your hand so that we'll know that you have a public comment. So, at this time, we have Mary that has a public comment. If you want to come to the mic, you can, yes, that would be helpful.
Get Mary. Here, they don't see.
That's okay, they don't need to see. Good evening, I'm here tonight because I have heard from a number of constituents in regards to the sports field. And it's hard for me to be here tonight because I have the utmost respect for the folks who are proposing the sports field. But, over the discussion, and I think a number of people have not really fully understood how this is going to possibly roll out, and the cost seems as though, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it has continued to increase through the discussion. I believe it started out at between three to four thousand now, or million, now I'm hearing five to six million. And I have had a number of folks who were former sports athletes at even the high school, who actually even still go to games and sporting events, that actually approached me, which I was surprised, and said, "We'd love to see some improvement to the field, but at that cost, we're very concerned." I think, folks, right now, our taxpayers are looking at many issues from what we've just come out of and not sure that we're out of with COVID, but the uncertainties of many pieces. I look at what our debt service is on the town level, let alone, and maybe you good folks who sit on the board can tell me what we're paying back still on for debt within all of our school responsibilities. That ends up really adding up to real money. You know, we may say it's a little bit this year and the next year, a little bit more. Looking at even our town, we're still paying from Irene of 10 years ago. And, looking at what I have been reviewing on some other issues with the town, what we owe, as of even next year, 2022, it's around $28 million. And yes, it's over a number of years, and yes, everyone can say it's spread out, but these continue to add to the taxpayers. We have a large population of elderly folks who live in this community, who are on fixed incomes, I've heard from a number of them as well, that said, "We just can't be stretched any further." And I'm not looking, like I said, it was hard for me to come because I do have the great respect for those proposing this, but I'm concerned at the timing of this. I just, and the number just seems to be off the charts, and I'm just concerned with that, and I'm speaking on behalf of--
She was still, are you done, Mary?
I guess I'm done.
Okay. She's done, Tim. Are there anyone else that has a public comment?
And Nick can tell us if someone is on the screen, we can help you all with that. If you see anyone with their hand up, Nick.
So that was it, Tim, just one.
Tim, do you want to try to call in the phone, the phone number? You can join the Zoom meeting by phone. Dave Richardson called this way. You said that?
Yes.
Tim, I just emailed you the phone number to call into the meeting if you think that would work better.
Sounds like he's yodeling, huh?
I missed a member. Sorry, I see Ed Laterno is on electronically, I missed him in the count.
If you call him, then he can call you back.
It's not this phone, it's a Zoom number that will come up on the screen if he called in. All right.
I hear you, Tim. If you want us to repeat the meeting ID number, we can do that. And, if you have a pencil--
Okay, wait a minute, I can, eight, four, seven, seven, five, four, six--
That's correct.
Seven, oh, two, nine.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll try putting that in the chat for--
And you have the password if you need it.
It's on the agenda.
I don't know, I don't have a password.
The number is eight, eight, six, 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 five.
They're working, I'm not-- So I get his music.
No, you're in. You got to unmute your phone.
I think that's star six?
It's unmuted.
Star six.
On your phone.
Dial six?
Star six.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Turn off your iPad, Tim, so we don't get feedback.
Okay, my iPad, my iPad is off. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we can go into executive session. And we have two main reasons for going now. One, I move that the board finds premature public knowledge of the option for settlement in employment matter of Nixon would clearly place the school board as substantial different damage because there is less of disclosing legal advice if the discussion occurs in open session. And the second reason, I move that the board enter executive session to discuss the legal option with respect to settlement of the employment matter of Mr. Nixon. I also invoke and invite Jim Cogee, Laura Boudreaux, Nick Dogg, and Gina Atwood to the executive session. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
We have a second.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, we'll move into executive session.
I'd love to give Cat TV--
We have to--
Wait, Tim, should we not recommun the meeting to come out of executive session? I don't know if we need a vote for that or not, but there seems to be some nodding in the room that we do.
I'd like to move that we come out of executive session.
Jackie moved and Susan seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good, I will now read the motion. I hereby move that the board accrue and authorize the chair to execute the prepared settlement agreement which resolves the employment of David Nixon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have this all up? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You got a no. You have one no.
Excuse me, Ed Laterno is--
Right, he's muted, so I don't know what his vote is. Ed, can you unmute and vote?
Yes, I just did. I'd like to abstain from this. I still have reservations about the whole process.
Very good, we have one. We can move on. Yeah, I have--
You have one no, one abstention, and six yes. For Richard's benefit, if you can see.
Okay, we, I move that the board appoint Timothy T. as principal of the Mount Anthony High School of Sacramento under the terms and conditions of the agreement between the Administration Association and the Board of Directors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
What is the duration of this?
The association agreement contract is, I think expires in two years, so, and then it's renegotiated. It's all, it's not individual contracts for the principals, it's by the terms and agreement of the principal's agreement, so.
It's re-upped in two days or--
Well, yeah, it, it keeps rolling over unless you take action. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All those in favor, please respond by the mic. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention. Thank you. The next, the next question, that the board appoint Christopher Mawyer as principal of the Mount Anthony Union Middle School of Sacramento under the terms and conditions of the agreement between the administrators, administrators and administrators and the board of directors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please respond by the mic. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
One.
Abstention?
I don't think he heard you.
Leon, opposed.
I'm sorry, let's, let's, so I can move again, just to be sure. All those in favor, please respond by the mic.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
We have one vote, abstention. The passers, thank, thank you very much. We move on to the superintendent's report.
Oh, there's, okay. I've asked the SBSU COVID-19 coordinator, Ashley Walker, who is your Mount Anthony Union Middle School nurse, to join us tonight, and she's joined us from her car. At the Union Elementary Board meeting last week, we asked the board to endorse the AOE guidance for mask-wearing for the start of school, and we're asking the MEU board to do the same. They're asking that it's mask-wearing for at least the first 10 days of school, so that we can assess what the vaccination rates are in our school. Once the eligible population of students reaches 80%, we no longer, the guidance is that we no longer wear masks in school. And I'm gonna stop here for a minute, that's what I'm gonna ask the board to vote, and I'm gonna ask Ashley to address that, she can tell you where our vaccination rates are right now, and what other-- But, keep in mind, school is going very much the way it was pre-COVID, the physical distance requirement is not there, as long as people wear masks, they have to wear masks on buses, we'll be able to use our cafeteria again, it won't be, you know, grab and go lunches, so hopefully there'll be some return to normalcy. Ashley, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm at Dan's bus with my daughter, so. So, currently, numbers for the middle school, I've been looking at numbers, and we are around 30% of our eligible student population being vaccinated. And the high school obviously has much bigger numbers, but their summer recovery numbers were about the same, 30 to 31%. So we're guessing that they're about the same in their general population of kids also, so it's gonna take time to go through all those numbers. But, the AOE has clearly said this is the safest way, and with our community's numbers being as high as they are, I would endorse that this is what we need to do to start the school year, and then we can reevaluate on a monthly basis at the school board meetings. And when they, the 80%, once we would reach that, only those vaccinated would take their mask off. It doesn't mean everybody would be unmasked, so we would still have a population of students or staff required to wear a mask if they are not vaccinated.
And our proposal is that we revisit this every month as a regular agenda item, so we can get updates from Ashley on where we are with vaccination rates, and maybe we can, you know, take another avenue. And that's the same proposal we made with the Union Elementary Board, that we discuss this every month and adjust, so until your next meeting in September, I would ask that the board endorse this.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, if, how are you gonna reassess after 10 days? What's gonna happen after 10 days?
So, that's why we're saying not 10 days, that was the guidance from the AOE, we want you to keep this in place until your next monthly meeting, and then we will have this discussion, because 10 days won't work, Jackie.
Yeah, I just sent you this memo from the AOE, from the Vermont School Board Association of the AOE, just sent out another memo saying that school boards may adopt a written policy regarding students' wearing, and so we can, we can hand that over to you.
Right, you, you can certainly do that, and that was in the AOE guidance from a week ago, but you know how long it takes us to get a policy enacted, even if we're going quickly, we have to have, the policy board isn't meeting until September, and, you know, Leon can explain better than I can how the process, we need something quicker than that, so that's why we're asking for a board, which, it was a memo from Secretary French just as we were entering this meeting, so I haven't completely read it yet, but that the board can take this action by board vote, so.
But couldn't we also, though, do the same thing we did for the closure of school? In other words, let you make that call and--
You vote, the board could vote to give that authority--
Rather than just have a policy.
Right, but I would like the boards to do it, it is my recommendation that we do that, I'm asking that the board endorse that.
Can I make the motion now, Tim?
Yeah.
I so moved that we give Jim the authority to require whatever it is from the AOE--
Only in the AOE guidance until at least the next board meeting.
Correct.
Second.
Sure. I move that we give Jim the power--
Authority to--
Authority to do what the AOE says without--
Guidance regarding mask-wearing.
Regarding mask-wearing.
Until we reassess it, your September board meeting.
Does anybody understand the motion?
Second.
You better tell them your name, because I don't think Richard knows.
Tori Rich, seconds.
Yes, I, I was just wondering, did we rescind all of that authority to do that?
It expired with the emergency order, but my authority that you voted on the state of emergency for the, then my authority that you voted ended with the emergency order.
So just wanted everybody to know that, it was a whole slew of things that were given, and now they were rescinded back, and so now we're gonna do something else for this particular start of the school season.
Until September meeting.
Until September or longer, I prefer myself to go longer.
Yeah.
I hate to hear the kids just going on a month-to-month basis, just why not the whole quarter or whatever? I mean, that's my opinion, and everybody will know what to expect for an extended period of time than to just be going week by week, a month by month, if we need to do that.
I totally agree.
Whatever the wish of the board is, you can adopt--
So we could, can we--
Because I don't think we're gonna have, you know, Ashley, we're not gonna be at that 80% by the September board meeting day.
And she's shaking her head.
No, because remember, yeah, kids need two vaccinations, and they're four weeks apart already, so even if the kid goes out and gets one at the start of school, they have to wait four weeks for their second, and then we have to wait two weeks after that second vaccine to consider them fully vaccinated. So you're at least six to eight weeks out before anybody would be able to add to those numbers that we already have.
Can we extend that polit, not policy--
Well, and that's why I'm having the discussion--
Can we extend it until midterm?
We can always rescind it, if you're more comfortable saying that you want to have a mask-wearing policy, follow the AOE guidance on mask-wearing until the end of the second semester, I'm okay with that, because we can always, if Ashley tells me that we've hit the targets, we can always come back and rescind it.
Right, right.
But I just feel that you're at a better advantage to do that than here.
Sorry, sorry, this is specifically in regard to mask-wearing, not any other COVID-related policies? Okay.
So you gotta resc, Tim is saying, if you have a second, somebody's gotta withdraw their second.
We need to amend the motion to extend the time limit to midterm, at the end of the semester, the first semester.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Yes, we haven't voted on it.
Would you amend the motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to give the superintendent the authority to require masks in the school up until midterm.
Do we have a second?
Before we do that, I want to make sure that we're following the right procedures. Before we can make a second, when we need to withdraw all the things for the first one--
We have, we never voted on it yet.
Yes, but we had it on the floor--
Yes, it's a motion.
And you had a second for that.
Withdrawn.
And the second need to be withdrawn, and so now she, she's, Jackie's withdrawing it, and then we'll be legal out here for all the people that are not in this room that are listening to us, so now we can have a motion.
Again?
Yes.
I think I've memorized it now. I'd like to make a motion that we give the superintendent the authority to require masks as long as needed up until midterm.
Do we have a second in that motion?
I'll second it.
Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, I, do we have any numbers on how many students have been infected, and how many adults in the schools have been infected?
Infected?
Infected or vaccinated?
Infected.
I mean, I can't give you a direct number, but we've had several, several cases, I mean, it's, and it's been summer, we don't know what's happened over the summer with these kids and adults either, so we don't know accurate numbers currently today, but Benton County's numbers are very high.
Ashley, could you address what else we're still gonna do that, just is, we still have to do contact tracing and how that's all gonna work?
So, kids are still gonna be washing their hands throughout the day, they're still gonna be staying home when they're sick, we're still gonna institute that, that was part of the AOE's guidance. And we also still have the contact trace, so there still are gonna be cases in schools, and there are still gonna be times when kids are gonna be put on quarantine because they've been exposed. But COVID is not gone.
So that, that is a concern for us going forward, we, one of our meetings today, the whole quarantining of students and how do we continue their education while they're being quarantined, and so it's fingers crossed, but we're also planning. Yeah, sorry, just when it comes to athletics, does that, does that, that all goes by AOE as well, or is that-- VPA is also--
VPA, which they have not, they have not given their guidance yet, VPA. VPA, which they have not, they have not given their guidance yet, VPA.
So we're still awaiting VPA guidance versus sports, but I imagine it's gonna be similar.
Yeah, I would imagine so too.
Yeah.
Any other question?
Uh, there's no restrictions on how many people can go on buses anymore, they just have to wear masks, but there's no physical distancing on the buses anymore.
And mask-wearing is only indoors. When kids are outside or adults, there's no mask-wearing outdoors required with this mandate that we would put in place. It would strictly be for indoors only.
Is that even for the unvaccinated?
Yes.
Yes, regardless of vaccination status.
Yep. Tim Fran has his hand up.
Uh, Ashley Fran Kenny, uh, you say the numbers are high, what are the numbers?
Well, just in Benny County alone, we had twenty-two cases overnight, so...
Okay.
We update the dashboard every day.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
How does the dashboard, if you could follow that? Are there any other questions? We are voting on that motion. All those in favor? This is why I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Very good.
Ed, Ed opposed. I don't think you can see that, Tim, so just record Ed as opposing.
All right, Jim, does that continue?
Just, just one brief update for school, uh, our staff returns Monday and Tuesday. We normally do an opening day at, uh, in the blue seats at the high school. We have made the decision not to bring six hundred staff members together in the auditorium. So for Monday and Tu, and normally what happens, I mean, we have like an opening speaker, meet and greet, and then you go into the gymnasium and we have tables set up for, like, HR is there and special educations there, and teachers and staff can come around and greet and get information. So what we're gonna do is we're doing a bus tour on Monday and Tuesday of all twelve buildings in the SU. Uh, Central Office has been invited to join us on the bus, Dufour's providing the bus. We have a, a tour scheduled for Monday and Tuesday to, to, uh, do a brief visit at each school, ask the staff to come out and greet us, and we'll all have name tags on, because with the addition of, um, Arlington and Sandgate, now, you know, we're well over seven hundred employees, so we can't make the assumption, right, seven, what would be?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty. So we can't make the assumption that everybody knows everyone, so this is an attempt to do a meet and greet. We have a small little, uh, return gift for everyone that we'd normally do with the, uh, with the big deck thing. We're looking forward to that. Uh, we'll call it the SB, SBSU Central Office Bus Tour, and that'll be Monday and Tuesday. And then the students' grades K through nine return Wednesday, and, uh, and Thursday and Friday, then the rest of the high school starts. So the high school starts with just the ninth grade is, uh, coming in, so, uh, a lot of planning's gone into, I wanna thank, you know, my staff, um, they put in a lot of work to hopefully get this, uh, going ready. And again, she's on here, I can't thank Ashley Walker enough for stepping up and being our COVID-nineteen coordinator, and, uh, and my assistant superintendent, uh, is here, woman, I, I really have to praise her for, uh, all the work that she is, and her, and the people that she works with who have put, uh, together to get this going. Uh, I got HR behind me, I wanna thank Nick, I think he told me we've onboarded well over seventy new staff members.
Correct.
It's a lot of work, it's a lot of work to get that many, many people onboard. We still have some open positions, uh, that we're struggling with, uh, and we're also struggling to find substitutes. We have a substitute training class scheduled and no one has signed up for it. We will be going to the SU next week to ask to, uh, raise our substitute rates, uh, but it's no different than you see any restaurant you go into, any store you go into, everyone's looking for help and, and we are too, so if anyone's listening, I think they want to, uh, the substitute for us this year would love to have you, so...
What's the rate?
Uh, it varies by, um, the current rates vary by, um, whether you're a high school diploma, I have the expert right here behind me.
The current rates vary from a paraprofessional sub at eleven seventy-five up to a certified teacher eighteen eighteen, and that's current, as Jim mentioned, we're gonna propose some changes.
We're proposing to increase that, so...
Oh, so you're going to increase what's there?
Yeah, that, that's gonna be my proposal to the issue board next week. Uh, I'm not worried about, uh, budget-wise impact on that, because we're not filling subs at the rate that we need, that what we have budgeted for, so we should have enough to cover that. Um, and even with that, I, I don't know how many more that, that will attract, considering how many we need.
Would it go to fifteen dollars an hour?
So, I, um, I, I would like that, but there are considerations about what you pay your parent educators, or they make, they make slightly less than that, so I'm not sure if I, we're still working out the details of what that grid's gonna look like, whether I can make that recommendation without then, you know, other employees being impacted by it, so that's, I've gotta look at that whole thing. But I, I do consider that kind of the base wage.
Well, the discrepancy really is that you don't give health benefits to a substitute.
Yeah, I understand that, and they don't get sick days and they don't get, but I al, I also don't want then parent educators who we definitely need telling me, "Well, I don't take health insurance, so I'm just gonna go and sub every day." And so, uh, we've, we've thought of all those scenarios and we're, we'll have a proposal for the SU committee, but, that's it, Tim.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other questions for Jim? Is that all over? Fine, I'd like to make, make another motion. I move the school appoint Japanese psychologists from Gatsby, Gary, and Ron Higginson from Woodburn as representatives to the Mount Aspen Union, Little and Amish school for the service to help in the election and help support Daniel Fink. Do we have a second?
So, Tim, I'm just gonna, I don't know how well everybody heard you, but we're gonna, it's standing that the board, because it's an at-large election, you can appoint the representative to open seats until the next general election, so that I, they'll, they'll have to take out papers and run just like everyone else if they want to run it anytime now.
I have spoken with each of us, and I'm anxious to join this... A second.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Give a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extinction. Good, we can move on now to the financial, I need approval of the treasurer's report.
I'll move it.
Do you have a second?
Sorry, I can't hear.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Give a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extinction. Very good, can, 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 can...
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Sorry, I can't hear.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Give a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extinction. Very good, we move on to the finale field. Is Mike there?
Yes, he is.
I'm here.
You're on.
Well, I, I wasn't gonna, uh, do a full-on presentation, I basically, um, the, the committee emailed back and forth after we got, um, you know, the, uh, the reports from the engineers, and we unanimously came up with a recommendation, uh, that I included in your packet, um, as far as field infill and track surfaces, and we're just looking for the board's, um, kind of consent that we are moving forward with this, and the engineers are going to prepare for a presentation to the community and the board at the September meeting. So this is just a preliminary to see if there are any kind of, um, you know, changes that you would like to be made. Um, we're, we're thinking, like, we're, we're still moving forward and, uh, we're just, uh, we're, we're hoping that you accepted the recommendations or I'm here to answer any questions that people may have, so...
Any questions?
I got some. Fran, Kenny? Mike, the, uh, I'm going over the second set of numbers, so I've got the first set, and I've got, uh, in the new toilet and storage building, what in hell are we including a, including a crow's nest? Isn't that something on a ship?
Yeah, so, uh...
I mean, I'm...
It's a good question. Dave, Dave Reddickston asked me the same exact thing. Um, it has to do with the football, uh, program, and, uh, within football, they're required to video their games. Uh, both teams are allowed video access, uh, to, to the, to the games. Um, and there's not enough room in the, in the current, um, you know, in the, uh, press box that we have for both teams, so one, the team ends up up on top of the roof, which is a, uh, which ends up being a hazard, so we thought, uh, and this is what a lot of schools do, uh, we would put another kind of, uh, place for the football, uh, for the visiting team to have their cameraman. They also use radio, um, you know, walkie-talkies slash microphones to like call down plays. Again, this is all part of, uh, what I've learned about the football, uh, program, so, um, it's, it's for, uh, moving forward with our football, uh, program.
Okay, uh, the, the first set of numbers was, uh, five million, five twenty-five-eighty, and of course, this is five million, nine thirty-eight-two-seventy. Um, when, when I look at the price for, for the storage building slash toilet stuff, three-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand. To me, that's totally ridiculous, Mike. I'm, I'm not trying to be critical here, but this is a working man's town. He, I mean, you can build a nice house for three-eighty-four, even with the prices today.
And, and I, I, I said, I, we, we asked the same thing, and I think the, um, what we're wanting you guys to do is see what the, the proposal is as far as the engineers, and then you guys can, you know, you, like, you just seen the, um, you know, the layout and the specs, know that it's also, uh, gonna be used for the physical education program as well, um, PE storage facility, um, you know, it's not just for, uh, it's not just for, gonna be for athletics, because the field will be used, you know, throughout the day, over time, uh, during the fall, during the, uh, during the spring for, for PE. Um, so it's, it's a multi, it's not just an athletics, uh, kind of facility, it's also for the, you know, for the PE program within the school, so...
Yeah.
Uh, but I think, like, my, my thoughts are, I mean, for this presentation, as far as the, the details of that building, I want the engineers and the architects to kind of go over that with you, and then we can pull back from that if, if you guys want to. Um, all that I'm looking for, for today was really the infill and the track surface, so they can present their, uh, they just need to know what we want to use, and so we made a recommendation as far as that goes. Uh, and then in September, I think you'll get all the, you know, the details.
Yeah, um, I'll hold a lot, I've got a lot of questions here, but I'll hold them till that meeting in September, and I hope that they've got a, this thing's gotta be whittled down quite a bit. I mean, you know, I, I'm all for sports for the kids and all that stuff, but we wanna create a, a, a college environment, they can go to college and, and experience that, not here. I mean, it's just, the money here is just totally out of line, but in, of course, we gotta, with the administration we have elected now, it, you know, we got a bunch of wingnuts running things, and we, I mean, you're coming out with stuff like this, it's crazy. But anyway, I'll...
Do you mean this administration?
No, 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 I'm talking about, you know what administration I'm talking about.
I thought he was calling me a wingnut.
Anyway, so I, I thank you for that, Mike, and I'll, I'll wait till the September meeting. Uh, one last thing, are we gonna get enough exposure out there to people that'll attend this meeting, and I'm not saying just twenty people, I want couple, two or three hundred people, because they really oughta go over this thing, all of us together, and ask a lot of questions, because this is a, a big impact, and I don't know if you seen it, but Mary Morrissey was here at the beginning of the meeting and, and she's hearing from constituents too, so, uh, it's out there, and there's, there's a lot of things that, obviously, we gotta go over, so, thanks.
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Uh...
No, Tim, Jackie has her hand up, Tim.
Ed does too.
Okay.
So who goes first?
Jackie then Ed.
Okay, so, um, I still have reservations about, uh, artificial turf, and I would like to see, uh, a comparable, uh, quote, uh, on what it would take and how much money it would cost to have, uh, a regular dirt field, uh, uh, instead of an artificial turf field. Uh, the other concern that I have are injuries, sports injuries. I don't know if you're aware of this, but, um, the NFL, um, association players, uh, have also asked that their fields be turned back to regular grass. Uh, ten top teams, ten top NFL teams have, uh, already started the process, and if you'd like the, um, information, we can get that to you, but I have great reservations about it. I have a nephew who last year in March, uh, was on artificial turf, uh, he was playing lacrosse, fourteen years old, and he tore his ACL, and he's still, the, the operation, he had to have an operation, uh, repair that, but he, he still can't play on, for three more months. So I, I don't want that to happen to students here, and...
But it'll continue to happen to the students here if they continue playing the lacrosse on the lacrosse field.
And I still don't want it to happen to anybody, uh, so I, I have serious, serious reservations about artificial turf. Uh, the third, uh, concern that I have is, of course, global warming. I'm, I'm a big, uh, proponent of stopping global warming and climate change. Uh, artificial turf adds ten percent more heat to a playing field than a regular dirt field, so that's it.
Um, just, thank you. Sorry, anyone want to go first?
Ed, next. Yes, I, I would like to see what the projection is for the, the budget impact annually for this. As near as I can figure, if we spend six million dollars on this field, we're gonna add two-hundred thousand dollars to the budget that will go on indefinitely, there'll be no end to it, and I'm not sure we, this community can afford that. I also believe that the expenses being projected would be objected to by Father Spinelli. Father Spinelli was my principal, and he would not stand for spending this much money on athletics.
Mike, are you gonna have those figures for your September presentation?
Yeah, so, um, I think that's something that Renee was, uh, you know, was, was working on in, in terms of the, uh, the bond bank and kind of talking about...
I believe you're right.
Those projections were. Um, you know, one of the things that we were looking for, for you guys for today, again, was just a thumbs up on what the, um, what the committee's recommendations are, the committee's kind of done the work for you to say, "We want this infill, we want this track surface," and then the engineers can get a better handle on, you know, the, the money, the finances, um, as far, as far as that goes. Um, and I, I just, you know, leave, you know, for you guys, and I know Leon talked about this, I think at the last meeting, um, we're going, you know, big right now so that we can kind of pull back from it, um, you know, it, to me, it's not anything that we wanna keep adding to. I think Leon's quote was like, "Let's not, you know, start small and then have to keep adding, you know, to it." Um, so we're, we're comfortable, like, hearing from everybody, hearing from, you know, the community and making adjustments, um, but we wanted to kind of throw out, you know, uh, the, a grand plan, and then if we have to, um, you know, kind of pull back, we can pull back a little bit, but the committee's been working to kind of pull this together.
Tim, uh, you had Leon, then Tori for you. Tori, you can go.
All right, uh, so first, uh, Mike, I just wanted to ask you, did you ever do, um, anything where you did a side-by-side of, if we were to totally redo the grass field and the turf? And I didn't get here until March, so I don't know if you guys did that.
We did, yes, we did.
Okay, so, um, so I don't, I don't know what those numbers look like, but I'll, I can take a look at that part. But also just speaking to the player safety part, I just wanted to add some clarity to it. I'm not saying that this is incorrect at all. Um, what I will say is I don't think it gives the whole picture. Um, first of all, if you're using NFL statistics, um, NFL players are much larger, much stronger, produce a lot more force. I was a kinesiology major in college, that's the only reason I'm weighing in on this. And I've seen, I've seen numbers, uh, like here, it says the non-contact injuries are astronomically higher on turf. Um, and, and so I've seen the science where it's a lot closer, uh, between, uh, artificial turf and natural turf. Um, but I also say this, you know, when it comes to NFL players, it might not be the best metric to use because they are so much larger, so much stronger. Um, non-contact injuries have been going up either way on art- artificial or on regular turf. So it's just something else, uh, to consider. And also when we're talking about turf, uh, I'm talking, and so if, and so when a NFL player says that we're not, you know, we're not getting hurt as often on natural turf surfaces, well, their natural turf isn't our natural turf. And we have a, we have, we have, we have a problem on our, on our field. So, um, so that's just something to take into account too, is, um, yeah, our natural turf is not what, uh, what the Browns or the Raiders are playing on. So that's another part to take into it.
Leon's next. Leon's next, Tim.
I, I, I just want to continually, uh, support the efforts that we need to be doing this. If you, for the whole town, the rec center is just about finished over there. And if you would just, I'm not, go over there to look and see what that's done. Everybody ought to be trying to bring their kids into town for the, the, the philosophy that we have, early education development. And the rec center is showing a good thing along that line. Now we got kids coming in and going through the process and getting to the high school. People that are going to come to town want to see that we are investing in what it is that their kids are capable of doing. And that's all I'm saying. We need to do what Mike is talking about here. We're putting out a program, look at it, and if we can't afford this particular piece or that particular piece, we'll make some adjustments. Let's make it for money and let's move on.
Thank you, Leon, anybody? No?
I see no one else, Tim.
On my, you want to talk with any? On board, you continue. That right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, the recommendations that I put forward in the, uh, document I presented in the packet, that those are, you know, supported. I know I, I talked with Dave, I've talked with Susan, and you know, who are part of the committee, uh, and they're, they're in favor of those recommendations. But I just wanted the board to be aware that we're moving forward, um, with the, the infill, you know, field choice two, track choice C that were presented in the, in the packet. Um, and I'm hearing no complaints as far as those go. So I'm just gonna like, you know, let the engineers and the architects know that moving forward.
Tim, we can't hear you, you're gotten far away, so. Not, not really, just, you're very faint. We can hear you now, we were able to turn you up. Go ahead.
I'll second it.
I still didn't hear it.
The, the motion was to get authorized the, uh, uh, Spinelli Field Hockey, uh, Committee to proceed with the engineering development part of the specification so that we can get a cost as to what these things are going to be, uh, later on. I mean, before we make a final decision. So we're giving them the authority to move on, to, to, to ask for quotes and things.
Is that without, um, is that without having a, a grass field quote too?
Well, you asked for that and they're, they're looking at turf, grass, whatever you've asked for. And if I understood Mike correctly, that everything that everybody is asking for and, and wanting to know is being sought so that we can make a final decision based on what this is going to do and what it's going to cost.
They need you to narrow down the options so that they can get, uh, accurate price from the engineers. So what the infield and track surfaces are going to be. You still, the other options will still be there.
So we're still not voting on the bond?
No, no.
So you have a motion?
So you got a motion and we, a second.
Second.
Or a motion and second, Tim, uh, Tim? Want to go, all in favor of supporting the, the continuous effort by the, uh, committee, uh, as we discussed by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One.
We have one opposed.
Two.
Two opposed. So you have eight ayes and, I mean, six ayes and two opposed. No extensions? Okay. Thank you, Tim.
We can't hear you again, Tim.
He sounds like he's underwater.
Sounds like he has a duck. Sounds like he has a duck.
It's, uh.
He's underwater with a duck.
Item number 11, which is no policy. And then item number 12 is the chair's report. And I'm quite sure you have something to say.
Oh, I don't.
Tim might pass it.
I'll second that.
Okay. From the, based on what I can see is that concludes the meeting efforts for tonight. And so if you don't have anything else, then, uh, we have a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting.
It's moved.
It's been moved and seconded, that the moot meeting be adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.